Allison Pickard, so moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget legislation.
Bill number 2623, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anne Arundel County. Bill number 2723, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts. Bill number 2823, An Ordinance Concerning Tax Levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number 2923, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number 3023, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number 3123, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number 3223, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number 3323, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number 3423, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number 3523, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number 3623, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge. Bill number 3723, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Metered Water, and Wastewater Charges. Bill number 3823, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Use or Occupancy Tax. Bill number 3923, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Transportation Network Service Assessment. Bill number 4023, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Transfer Tax, Housing Trust Special Revenue Fund. Bill number 4123, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Revenue Reserve Fund. Bill number 4223, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Income Tax. Bill number 4323, An Ordnance Concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service Charge. And Resolution Number 1723, Resolution Increasing the Rate of Transfer Tax on a written instrument conveying title to real property or a leasehold interest in real property when the consideration paid or to be paid for the conveyance is $1 million or more.
Wow.
Take a breath.
I know. It's always interesting hearing that role of legislation. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 1823.
Resolution Number 1823, Resolution Appointing an Assistant Administrative Officer to the County Council. Whereas Section 302B of the Anne Arundel County Charter and Rule 2-102 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council authorize the appointment by the County Council of an Assistant Administrative Officer. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Anne Arundel County, Maryland that it hereby appoints Alexis Burke as Assistant Administrative Officer to the County Council, and be it further resolved that Ms. Burke will begin her service as Assistant Administrative Officer on May 11th, 2023.
From the council, was there any discussion on Resolution 1823? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution Number 1823.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 1823 has been adopted.
Thank you. We will now hear from several groups as we prepare to dive into the proposed budget just presented by the county executive. So at this time, can I have Mr. -- the Chair, Gus Kurtz, please come to the table from the Planning Advisory Board?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Gus Kurtz, and I'm Chair of the Planning Advisory Board, and have been on the board for almost eight years now. This year, with our capital budget, we reviewed many, many things, and we believe that the budget should be consistent with Plan 2040, our Watersewer Master Plan, and the other functional plans adopted by the county. The recommendations for this CIP, I refer to as capital budget, are based on the assumed availability of $112 million in pay-go funds and $1.14 billion in bond affordability, which is set at $160 million per year over the five-year budget. Initially, the budget request was $1.692 billion, which was $441 million over affordability. After many hours and many meetings and very, very difficult decisions, the PAB recommended a capital budget of $1.26 million, which was under affordability by $5 million. I would like to personally thank the board members, which one member's here, Elizabeth Rothberg, and all the board members for their volunteer work and their hard, hard decisions that we had to make in not funding every project that we could or wanted to. Also, I'd like to thank the staff of the PAB, Jessica and Michael, for making sure that we were always fully prepared and had all the tools necessary to help make our decisions on this budget process. One person that I'll point out in DPW is David Braun. When you're making decisions on a lot of these projects, you need to ask the project what it entails, what the timeframe, and so on. And we would always -- Naomi would always refer to David Braun, and David was always one that was able to give us answers, very, very informative and complete answers. And sometimes in a five-year budget process, there's a bumpiness in the budget numbers, and sometimes you can take a project and move it forward a year or back a year and so on to try to even things out within the five-year plan. The other person that was a big, big help in our budget office is Naomi. And Naomi has these magnificent, amazing spreadsheets that I don't know how she can do it, but she loads in numbers and hits a button, and boom. At the end of the day, there's all the answers that we need to try to summarize the budget changes. As we examined every budget request, one very consistent thing has occurred. Almost every project currently that's underway is over budget. Some of these cost overruns are 50, 60, maybe even 70% over the initial cost estimate. This is very concerning. Since we must obviously complete these projects that are currently under construction, we have no choice but to fund these cost overruns. These overruns have directly impacted our ability to start on new projects. The PAB has made very tough decision. Every project has merit, and we wish we could fund every one of them. Many years ago, the Board of Education, after years of discussion, made a tough choice of starting the Old Mill Complex projects, knowing that these projects would take up a majority of the Board of Education capital funding for a four-, five-, six-year period. We are in the middle of these projects and must finish this massive undertaking. And one of the driving factors we consider when we look at the evaluating a project is see if there are other funding sources, grants, matching funds, state, federal dollars, that would help to defray the cost of a project. And I would like to commend the school board and Rexam Parks and all the departments for working really hard at finding grant money and other funding ways that help move these projects forward. The Old Mill Complex, an example, would be Cat North funding. There was a lot of grant money and other dollars that came in to help that project move forward. With that said, we are happy to completely fund many of the new projects that were proposed, whether they're bike trails, or parks, or the new 9/11 public safety center. These projects are vital to the quality of life for our residents. Once again, this was a tough, tough budget year, the toughest I've seen in seven years. The PAB has done its best and made some very hard decisions, and we now forward you the 2024-29 approved capital budget and the affordability comparison to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do. So, Mr. Kurtz, what would you attribute to the cost overruns for the previous? Was there a systemic similarity between all of them? Maybe they were just underbid, or is there anything specific that came out when you guys reviewed that?
You know, you can say the word COVID, and maybe that's part of it. We're not privy to the specific dollars and cents when it gets down to the cost overruns as far as why. But it is very alarming that almost every project has experienced major, major cost overruns. Sometimes you always see 10% or 20%, but we're seeing 50, 60, 70%. So I would encourage the council to look at the, not only the bidding process, but the estimating process, and see exactly if there's any changes that can be done in there to help hit that target number, that cost estimate, more accurately. Because you can't continue to look at projects that should be 4 million, and then they become 6 or 7 million, and know where you're headed.
Thank you. Check out. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To what degree, if at all, were you able to identify, Mr. Kurtz, prevailing wage as a factor? So the new prevailing wage legislation that was passed by the last council and the impact that that had on specific projects? Was that anything that was addressed by DPW or any of the folks presenting?
You know, every dollar and cents that we talked about as far as cost overruns, the word prevailing wage came into that discussion. How much, I don't know, whether it's 10% or 20%. But hopefully, ongoing forward, the new cost estimates will take into consideration that factor of prevailing wage, so.
Madam, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to get the recommended budget number, because the one I wrote down doesn't make any sense. Could you repeat just that top-line number?
Okay, it was 1.26 -- hold on. 1.267 billion.
Thank you. I heard million, and I knew that couldn't be right.
No billion.
Yeah.
1.267 billion.
Just wanted to make sure that I inserted the correct letter there. Is it fair to say that inflation and cost of materials and things like that are probably a factor as well?
A big factor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And your data that you received for your cost overruns? So is that a DPW given data point? So when you say, hey, someone's coming to you with 50, 60% more in cost, who is that speaking?
That number was provided from DPW.
It is DPW, okay.
And I have to apologize to David Braun, because I probably, on more than one occasion, I referred to David as Bruce, because we had worked with Bruce for so many years in the budget process and the numbers. And I want to tell, David referred to me once, he said, "I am the new Bruce." But those numbers came from DPW.
Check. Just as I am the new Bob Light.
Yeah.
No, so I've known you for almost, I think 2004 is when I first met you. So greatly appreciate your time that you've given to this board over the last eight years. Hopefully that continues. I certainly trust your opinion, and just grateful for the work that you and your team did completing this process. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, and good luck on the budget.
Yes, sir. All right. So up next, we will have the Spending Affordability Committee. Who is the Chair or Vice Chair? Here, okay, please. You know, it's hard. Sometimes, as you're walking up, in my brain, I was getting ready to say, "Name and address for the record in two minutes," but that's not the case.
So, my name is Ijaz Yunus. I am the Chairperson for the Spending Affordability Committee.
Yes, sir.
I have been a member of the committee since, I believe, more than six years now, and it's been an honor to serve the committee. The report that we have submitted is submitted in accordance with Section 610 of the Anne Arundel County Charter. And the section requires in part that the committee shall make advisory recommendations to the Office of the Budget, the County Executive, and the County Council relating to spending affordability, including county spending levels to reflect the ability of the taxpayer to finance county service and long-term debt. And the Section 610 also tells the Spending Affordability Committee to examine current capital projects, the five-year capital improvement program, per capita wealth, debt service, pay-as-you-go funding, and alternative source of funding. And we have quite a number of meetings to come up with our recommendations. There's lots of background information, the economic data that we review, the comparison between other states, counties, and the similar characteristics, performing the economic analysis, and with our discussions internally within the committee members. So we draw our conclusions, and the recommendation from the committee has followed the practice of previous committees that spending affordability can best be determined by estimating the growth in personal income of county residents. The committee analyzes personal income growth on both a year-over-year and long-term basis. The committee uses the definition of personal income provided by the U.S. Department of Commerce, Bureau of Economic Analysis, which is income received by persons from all sources, such as wages, employment benefits, business income, and investment income, whether it is taxable or not. To avoid placing additional financial burden on county residents, spending growth should remain in line with personal income growth. Simply, if county spending were to increase faster than personal income, additional taxes and fees from county residents would likely be needed at some point to support their spending. So, using personal income as a benchmark to guide our analysis, the Spending Affordability Committee recommends a fiscal 2024 spending increase of 5.1% against the fiscal 2023 adjusted base budget. And we have some tables that outline the results, how we compare the budget amount, which is listed, compared against the current expenses from the general fund, budget of $1.9 billion. I can read the whole amount, but this represent a $158 million increase, which is 8.7% over the Spending Affordability Committee's fiscal 2023 recommendation. The fiscal 2023 recommendation was conservative and reflected the significant uncertainty regarding the financial impact of coronavirus disease on the overall county. And our fiscal 2024 recommendation is based in part on better-than-expected county revenues and personal income projections for the fiscal 2022 and 2023. With respect to the capital budget, county budget policy stipulates that the general fund debt limit be less than 4% of forecasted personal income. Applying the committee's 5.1 budget growth recommendation to the average of current personal income estimates for fiscal 2023 results in a forecasted fiscal 2024 county personal income of $49 billion, $49.3 billion. Applying the 4% limit to this personal income forecast results in a recommended general fund debt limit of $1.9 billion. This represent a $154 million increase over the Spending Affordability Committee's fiscal 2023 recommendations. And we do have a table that outline the current expense budget recommendation against the capital budget recommendation. So I'll jump to the conclusion that outlined that based on the analysis presented above, the Spending Affordability Committee recommends an increase of 5.1% in the fiscal 2024 general fund budget as compared to fiscal 2023. This recommendation, again, is less than the personal income growth rate currently forecasted by Moody's for Anne Arundel County, which was 6.1%, and matches the forecast provided by RACI, which was 5.1%. The committee overall believe, based upon the deliberations, that the RACI's estimate is more conservative and therefore more sustainable. The committee encourages a more conservative approach, allowing budget and policy flexibility in future years. The committee once again extends its appreciation to our county employees. We have people joining us here, especially to Budget Administrator Hujah Hasim and Budget and Management Analyst Kyle Madden. The quality of government and services that they provide is second to none, and we sincerely hope that the service assembled by this report will help manage expectations and inform fair and just analysis of the fiscal decisions facing our elected leaders. Respectfully, we are open to any questions.
I'll say I'm grateful for the opportunity. So your committee, you've been down, how long have you been down, a couple members?
We, I mean, I have been on the committee for six years, but we have mostly every year repeat the same cycle of three or four interactions.
No, no, I'm saying you have two vacancies on your body right now, right?
Yes, we do have two vacancies. Those are, I believe, the District Four and Five.
Check, okay. And how long were those vacancies? How long have you had those vacancies?
I believe it is just like one year, because it hasn't been too long that the committee was not fully, you know, fully available.
Check. All right. Because I can't understate the importance of what you all creating these lateral limits from a spending standpoint certainly impacts the county and our ability to make decisions from a funding standpoint. So I just want to make sure whatever energy is needed to ensure that that committee stays flush, you know, I'm certainly supportive of it. That's all, because I do recognize the value the Spending Affordability Committee has on the entire county. So, yeah, truly grateful. Any, Ms. Radvian?
Oh. Actually, I didn't realize my light was on, but I do have a question. I'm guessing, just to make sure that I'm clear, any changes in the revenue model that this budget will bring are not included in your analysis? Is that correct?
Right. We pretty much follow the same process that we have in place of using the budgets, the estimates, and the actual ones, and the estimates that we receive from two different sources.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And there was no change in that model.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
All right, seeing no additional questions. Thank you. Thank you all for coming down today.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem.
Could I just jump in?
No, please.
I just wanted to say thank you to both the PAB and the Spending Affordability Committee very much for your hard work and for your service to the county. It's very appreciated, and these are very valuable analyses that you provide us. So thank you very much.
We will now be blessed by the Budget Officer, Mr. Chris Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. We're going to have a 30-second to one-minute interlude while I hook up the tech so that we can get this all rolling.
Awesome.
So you can get all of your questions prepared in your head in that time.
While you prepare that, I'll go on about how glad I am to work with you again in this capacity. Obviously, 10 years ago, you afforded me the opportunity to be up here with your support, so.
As I recall, it was 106 votes.
That's what it was, yeah.
But who's counting? Okay, we are all set, so let me just make sure we go to full-screen mode. Let me press yonder button. And it's showing red on this. Is that on the right channel? Is there an IT doctor in the house? Oh, now it has de-lit itself.
Have you plugged, have you used that dongle? It's called a dongle.
Yeah, it's tradition. Every year I come here, and it doesn't work, and then we fix it.
Got it.
Yeah, Chris, do you want to see what's going on? It keeps looping there.
There's the IT doctor. Doesn't need any drivers or, is that an ACMI port or is that USB through, uh, C? USB, type C?
A.
A?
I already suggested control.
But it really doesn't do anything, it just brings prompts to. There you go. He gonna, looks like he's gonna hardwire it. There it is, there it is.
Alright. When I said thirty seconds to a minute, I just meant five minutes, so. So again, uh, for the record, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, um, it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm gonna introduce my team, but before that, uh, let me echo the gratitude to the two, um, committees that came before, Planning Advisory Board and, um, Spending Affordability. Uh, they both did a great job this year, um, and Gus wasn't kidding with the capital budget, there was a lot going on, and, uh, they had to make some tough cuts, and we were fortunate, um, at kind of the last hour, we had some, uh, additional resources to deploy, um, in terms of different funding sources, so we were able to, um, go back and add back to some of those, um, reluctant cuts that they made. But, uh, they're real troopers, did a great job. Um, so now I'd like to take just a moment and introduce my team to you, we have a couple new members, um, but you can see them up on the screen. So Huja Hasim is our Budget Administrator, Huja's the Revenue Guy, um, so he does a lot of great work trying to make sure these numbers, uh, make sense and that we have a good fiscal foundation for the budget. Steven Turo is our Assistant Budget Officer, and he is the Operating Budget Lead. Uh, Steven, uh, doesn't get a lot of sleep over the last couple of months, um, but I think what you'll see is that put together a pretty good budget. Um, similarly, uh, Naomi leads the Capital Budget, she's our Senior Budget Management Analyst, and I mentioned that the Capital Budget, uh, just has been extra complex these last couple of years, um, and she was a real trooper to pull that together. Uh, I think you're familiar with Darlene and Samantha, uh, through their work over the last few years as departmental analysts, um, they're doing a fantastic job. We did switch around some of the departments and analysts this year to keep everyone on their toes and help budget analysts get a well-rounded, uh, experience throughout county government. And we have Janay Molden, uh, who, uh, is back with us after a little bit of, uh, maternity leave, and we weren't entirely sure she came back, she would come back, but she did. We're very glad that Janay came back. Um, what she does that's really invaluable, uh, besides everything in her job description, is she's our point person for the Special Community Benefits Districts. And I know they occasionally come before you guys, and we know that there's a lot going on with the CBDs, and, uh, Janay manages that work very well. Um, so now to our two new analysts who you might not have had a chance to encounter yet, Beau Zoo, Zoo is not a, um, unfamiliar face for county government, we stole him from DPW, uh, in the, um, Highways Bureau. Uh, Beau is fantastic, really, uh, hit the ground running and has extraordinary database skills, which if you know anything about budget, you know, knowing your way around Microsoft Access is super helpful around these parts, so thank you, uh, Beau. And then Kyle Madden, uh, he's new to county, uh, service, uh, he's got experience through the federal government and private sector, but, uh, he's really done a great job, and in addition, uh, to being a sharp analyst, um, Kyle's known around the office for being able to eat an entire roast chicken in one sitting, so, um, that is pretty amazing. Alright, so just buckle up, uh, we got a lot to get through, but I'm gonna talk fast. Uh, if you have any questions to clarify on a particular slide, feel free to stop me, but there is a lot of info in here, so if you wanna hold most of your questions to the end, there's a chance that I will answer your question, uh, inadvertently by some point in this presentation, okay? Alright, um, so this is just a reminder that we've been working on the budget for a long time, and now you guys only have forty-five days, sorry. Um, but, uh, it's a pretty good budget, I know you guys will work to make it better, and you have an excellent auditor staff, uh, to help you get there, uh, but we look forward, uh, to you guys striking the budget by June fifteenth, I think it's scheduled for June fourteenth, always nice to have a little margin of safety there. Um, and then this slide is here mostly to give me a reminder to mention that throughout this presentation, uh, there are rounding, um, and that may result in, you know, a total not summing up to exactly a hundred percent. We know it's a hundred percent, and if I carried out the decimals, it would be a hundred, but this presentation's hard enough to get through as it is, and I don't wanna start showing you, you know, uh, four or five different, uh, points past the decimal, so, um, if a number doesn't add up, ask me about it later, I'll show you that it really does. Okay, here we go, estimated revenue. Um, so this is a, uh, look at FY twenty-three, that's our current budget year, um, and you're seeing right here that we have revised our estimates from what was approved, uh, a little less than a year ago, and, um, most of these are due to pretty straightforward things, property tax and income tax, just both came in stronger than we originally forecasted. The economy has been robust, uh, wage growth has been strong, and so that is the result of those increases. Recordation and transfer, uh, what you're seeing there is a twenty-three, um, million-dollar shift in the negative, and, uh, I told you before that we were in a peak for recordation and transfer, those are the real estate taxes, we knew we were in a peak, and we budgeted down conservatively, but in fact, uh, the price or the, um, revenue from recordation transfer has cratered even further than we, uh, predicted, and so that's why you've got twenty-three million, uh, in the red. Um, most of the other numbers are noise, uh, just coming in a little bit up or down, um, but the other thing also is that, uh, we use fourteen point six less, uh, fund balance than we, uh, anticipated needing. So you can see all the way down at the bottom, the number change is zero, we'll get a little bit more into this, uh, here. You might remember last year I unveiled my color code scheme, and this is to help walk you through where our fund balance is right now. So if you look at the red number, this was our planned use, this is the amount of fund balance or one-time funds that we plugged into the current year budget FY twenty-three, okay? And so you can see there's our revenue, the approved budget, the projected realizations, um, we ended up having fourteen point six more than we thought, okay? So if you look at our expenditure side, we were actually under expenditures by twenty-four million. So you add fourteen point six to twenty-four, and you get thirty-eight point six million. Um, then at the very bottom line there, you can see we planned to program in twenty-six two point four million, but we needed twenty-eight, or sorry, thirty-eight point six less, so that's where we get two hundred and twenty-three point eight million dollars. Now, on this other slide, I'm gonna show you that our end of the fiscal year twenty-two fund balance was three hundred seventy point six, we're then subtracting that two hundred sixty-two point four number we just got to on the previous slide, and that shows you that available on July first, twenty twenty-three was a hundred and eight point two million, but again, as we just showed, we have thirty-eight point six million more than that because of under expenditures and overachievement on revenue, so that gets us to that one forty-six point eight million dollar number. That is available, uh, to us to deploy in the twenty-four, fiscal twenty-four budget, and you can see another way to get that is just subtract three seventy, uh, or subtract two twenty-three from three seventy. So that's how much fund balance, um, that you will see in that fiscal year twenty-four budget. Mostly, I'm gonna spend ninety-nine percent of this presentation walking through the general fund, I do wanna let you know there are, um, some special grant funds out there, the American Rescue Plan Act, which I think most of the council is familiar with, we got a total of a hundred and twelve point five million. Um, that spending deadline is end of calendar year twenty-four, uh, but we have been for the last several years, uh, taking requests, funding them largely to meet the needs of the pandemic and other, uh, related, uh, spending needs. Uh, we've appropriate, approved ninety-two point five million, uh, to date, we have some other things still out there as well. All of our US Treasury reports have been filed on time, um, and what you will see in this budget is about eleven point two million that is programmed into the fiscal twenty-four budget. Uh, the other special grant fund is the opioid restitution fund, this was new last year, uh, we got about one point five million in twenty-three, and we're expecting about two point three million in twenty-four. Um, this is essentially a, uh, recurring revenue stream for the next, uh, you know, ten, fifteen years or so, we're getting fixed amounts as a result of a settlement versus the opioid companies, so that's coming into the county, and we deploy that into the budget on opioid mitigation, uh, uh, programs and related needs. So that's a non-lapsing special fund. Okay, a little bit more detail on that, uh, here's a list of what we're putting in for ARP, American Rescue Plan, uh, funds, you can see that this is largely, uh, health and human services related. There are, there is two, um, slugs that go into the capital budget, that's for parks and rec, uh, renovation, and also broadband in OIT. And here's where the opioid restitution funding is going, this is largely in the Health Department, but there's also some in the Detention Center, um, so, uh, this totals about two point three million, uh, for this year, and that's generally the neighborhood of what we expect to get, uh, year to year in this fund.
I, I got a question. On the opioid, you had a hundred and twelve million for the, uh, uh, American Rest, um, ARP funding.
Yes.
Ninety-two here already, uh, ex, approved.
Approved, yes.
Ready to be expended, uh, you, you're, you're putting in eleven, so that puts you roughly a hundred and three million, what, what's the plan with the other five or six million, or, I'm sorry, nine million?
So that, um, again, we have a, a whole year and a half on the calendar before those funds have to be spent.
Correct.
But we're holding them essentially in reserve for, um, you know, knock on wood, if a pandemic or another situation was to come back up, we'd still have some money to immediately, uh, put into that, or if we get closer to that deadline and, uh, there isn't an immediate kind of pandemic-related need, uh, we can look at all the eligible uses and decide what the best use of that fund is.
Understand.
So it's essentially like fund balance, except it's restricted.
Mm-hmm.
We have to use it in things that are eligible under that US Treasury guidance.
In, by the end of twenty-four?
Uh, the end of calendar.
Calendar year twenty, yep.
Yep. Okay, now let's talk about the general fund, uh, so this is the budget, uh, two point one, uh, billion dollars and change, uh, just remember about a hundred and forty-seven million of that from the previous slide, uh, is fund balance, so that's one time. So that gets added, uh, to the total amount of the budget, um, but that is one-time revenue, not recurring revenue. Uh, so let's talk about year over year. So if we're comparing twenty-three to twenty-four, if we look when I was here before, uh, last year, when we approved the budget, it was actually a higher number, uh, two point one five billion instead of two point one three billion, uh, so what's the difference? How are we spending less money this year? It's that fund balance. So incrementally, we had more fund balance last year than we have this year. So what you'll see at the bottom of this slide, um, is showing that if you take out that incremental fund balance and just look at recurring revenue, then our revenue is up ninety-five point four, and that's almost exactly five percent. So that is what we would consider the budget growth year over year, because we wanna do apples to apples, we take out that fund balance. Alright, this is a, little slide with a lot of text, and I won't go through it all, but I wanted you to have a reference of some of the things that are either new or, um, that we felt were noteworthy in, in the budget, um, things like, uh, you heard the county executive talk about, so raising the rainy day fund, the forty-five million of Board of Ed funding, new cops and firefighters, uh, the, um, uh, OPEB for the Board of Ed, retiree healthcare, all of these things here, so I, again, I won't go through it all, but I, I wanted this to be here as essentially a reference slide, uh, for you all. We'll go into detail on all these things, uh, in the coming minutes. Okay, here's, uh, where our revenue comes from, um, you'll notice that there's two slices of the pie that are bigger than all the rest, and that's property tax and income tax, that's really the foundation for our county revenue. Uh, the other one that goes, um, up and down a bit is that, uh, recordation and transfer tax, it's close to five percent this year, uh, usually it's a little bit higher, but as the county executive spoke in his remarks earlier, we did see a dramatic decrease in those real estate taxes. Um, the other slice of the pie that's worth noting is the fund balance slice is about seven percent, again, that's higher than usual, um, but, uh, that is good funding that we can deploy on one-time uses and pay-go in the capital budget. Alright, here's just a little closer look on, on those percentages, and the far-right column is how they changed, um, uh, versus the fiscal twenty-three, uh, revised budget. So you can see total recurring revenue at the bottom, uh, four point one percent, um, up, and, um, the fund balance was, uh, a little bit, um, down versus, uh, twenty-three. Property tax revenue, this is our most important and most robust revenue stream. So in twenty-three, uh, we're doing a little bit better than forecast, and that's just simply because the property tax receipts are coming in stronger. Um, so, uh, again, we have a two percent homestead credit, which gives us some buffer, so even in the future, if, uh, the economy was to face a downturn and property values eventually started to go down, we would be somewhat insulated to that, but we ain't there yet, uh, money's still coming in strong from property tax. Uh, looking ahead to twenty-four, um, we have an assessable base increase of about three point one percent, and then for our tax cap calculations, I'm sure you're all familiar that we have to take January CPI or four point five percent, whatever is lesser of those two amounts, so for tax cap calculation purposes this year, uh, that's four point five percent. If we were to apply that to the current rate, we would have a tax cap rate, if you will, of ninety-five point two cents, um, for county residents, uh, of each hundred dollar of assessed value. Uh, however, as the county executive noted, uh, he is proposing the rate at ninety-eight cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and that will result in twenty-six million of extra, uh, funding which goes to the Board of Education, and for those of you, um, that were around, uh, back in the fiscal twenty budget, similarly, that rate was increased above the tax cap amount and funded the Board of Education, so that is the same mechanism, uh, happening again this year. So all told, that's about eight hundred and ninety million dollars of, uh, property tax revenue we're forecasting, and that is a, um, eight point four percent increase from what our revised twenty-twenty-three numbers are. Okay, here's how we compare against our neighbors, this does include the new.
Mr. Vokian, sir.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Trumbauer, quick question about the property tax cap and going over it. So I had this question four years ago, and I'm gonna come back to this, because it's
I hope I have the same answer.
I hope, we'll see, we'll see. So when we go over the property tax cap once, it's sort of this reading of state law, it seems like it resets the property tax cap instead of this idea, which I had, and I thought this is how the law was written, that said every year you have to justify that every incremental dollar over the tax cap is going to education. So my understanding is, once we do this again, we're now resetting the floor, and then every marginal dollar can go to education or doesn't have to, but we've done it one year, and now we've reset the amount we're getting, and we don't have to justify more at that point.
So, um, my understanding of.
Do you get my question? Does that make sense?
I, I get you.
Okay.
My understanding of the legislation is that the General Assembly wanted to, um, prevent the instance of a local jurisdiction revenue tax cap, uh, from, from preventing funding the Board of Education. Board of Ed funding also has a maintenance of effort stipulation, so once you fund to a certain amount, you can't fund less on a per pupil basis.
Right.
So once we reset that, um, as we did in fiscal twenty, that is the new baseline, and next year's calculation would be applied again, so.
Baseline.
Yeah, so that, that is, it is a one-time threshold that you meet, then that's the new level, and then next year it starts all over, um, so if you were to exceed the tax cap, the new tax cap amount in next year, you would have to do a similar justification.
Got it, yes, sir. That's what my understanding is from how law took it to, I, I, I just.
I am many things, a lawyer is not one of them.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, very good, thank you, other councilman. Uh, so this is showing you, we are the, um, gold-colored, uh, bar there, this is Anarundel, uh, as you can see, if you were to count right to left, we're the tenth lowest, this does incorporate the new, um, uh, assessment rate of ninety-eight cents. I will note that we, we are comparing our twenty-four rate to the approved budgets of the other counties in fiscal twenty-three, other counties are adjusting their rates, mostly up, um, maybe some of them are going down, uh, but, but this compares us to what it would be if everyone else stayed static. I will note that compared to last year, we hopped over Hartford and Allegheny just by a hair, because our nine-three-three rate was below them, uh, but nine-eight-zero is above, but we still are the lowest jurisdiction, um, of the big counties in central Maryland. Alright, I know what you're thinking, hey, Chris, how does this affect your average homeowner? Well, have I got a slide for you. Um, so if you are. So if you are fortunate enough to have a townhouse in the county and let's say your assessed value is two hundred and fifty. And again, this is not your, your market value. This is the assessed value, okay? So this assumes you may have the homestead credit, you're on a triennial review, but this is assessed value. Then in twenty-two-three, you paid two thousand three hundred thirty-two and fifty cents of property tax. With this new rate in twenty-four, if your value was to stay the same, you would pay two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of property tax. So that's a change of a hundred and seventeen and fifty cents. Now, if you have a moderate single-family home and it's assessed at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, then you're looking at about a little less than two hundred dollars change. And finally, if you have a larger home that's valued at just under a million at nine hundred thousand, then that's four hundred and twenty-three dollars more you'll pay this year compared to last year. Okay?
Are the numbers?
Are the fiscal years?
Yeah, they are. That's what happens when you do this late on a rainy Sunday, but yes. The, the change is, the change is right. I have mislabeled in some of them, so.
So it's in, for the single-family example here, it's plus one ninety-nine, not.
Yes.
And same for the luxury home, plus four twenty-three. Okay, just wanted to be sure.
This is what we call a fat finger error.
All good, we all do it.
Look, if this is the biggest mistake we have in the budget, I'll take it, right? It's just.
I thought it was marine math for a second there.
Oh, no, we're not going there, Mr. Chair. We are not going there. Okay, and this is just showing you that obviously we need to look at what the overall trend is, but then it's sometimes helpful to look at what that trend would be in today's dollars, looking back. And so this blue line just normalizes everything to today's value of dollar. But over time, going all the way back to nineteen ninety-four, you can see that the property tax revenue has pretty much marched up in a fairly linear slope over time. This is the homestead credit effect. So the total bar, which includes the red, would be what your, your house value is, your home value is. The red of this bar is that homestead tax credit and that's limited to two percent a year. So even if your, if your home assessment was to go up ten percent in any given year, you're not going to pay ten percent more on that value. You're going to pay two percent more. So it would take you several years to march up to that amount. And why is that important? One, it insulates homeowners from wild swings in their tax burden. But also it protects the county because in the event that there is an economic downturn or that property values were to go down overall, the first cut of that is going to come out, out of that red bar, which we're not even collecting money yet. So that means if there is a, a decline, the county is held harmless, at least for several years. And so we would not have to have dramatic consequences and defund important programs. And you can see this came into play. The biggest, the height of those red bars are up during the housing bubble of the late two thousand early digits. And you can see that that homestead credit came down drastically, but those green lines continued to march up. All right, let's switch to income tax. This is going to be interesting because of the new progressive income tax tiers. But again, in current year, our receipts are coming back stronger than what we anticipated. Largely, this is still in effect of strong wage growth and people realizing better-than-expected economic effects when we thought the pandemic was going to wipe everything out, but it did not. So that comes in over multiple years, so we're still seeing that. In twenty-four, you can see what our personal income estimates are in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, but we're looking at three percent in twenty-four. And then the most important thing is the new, the new bracket in our progressive income tax structure. So this is going to do a couple of things and I've got some subsequent slides where I'm going to march through this with you. But the first thing I wanted to note is we're setting up joint filer brackets. This is new this year. Last year we had one bracket, right? It was if you were a tax filer, you can pay that, you're going to pay that lower rate on the first fifty thousand of taxable income. Didn't matter if you made forty grand a year or three million a year. This year, we're setting up joint tax brackets. So if you file with your spouse or another member of the household, then it's that first seventy-five thousand of taxable income. So that actually means that many joint filers this year are going to pay a lesser tax rate than they did last year. Now, who's going to pay more? You heard the county exec's speech, we are going to raise taxes, but that's only for taxable income of four hundred thousand or more for single filers, four hundred eighty thousand or more for joint filers. So if I was fortunate enough to make five hundred thousand dollars a year and I was a single filer, I'm going to pay that increased rate, not on the total five hundred thousand of income, only on that hundred thousand after the threshold. So I'm going to pay two point seven percent on my first fifty thousand of income. And then on the balance between that and up to four hundred, I'm going to pay two point eight-one. And then above four hundred is when that three point two percent is going to kick in, okay? So that's a graduated rate. I'm going to walk through some examples, but first I wanted to note that we are projecting seven hundred and fifty-six point eight million of twenty-four revenue and that is a two point six percent increase based on our revised twenty-three numbers. Okay, so here is what this looks like on a macro scale. So we built a model, we used tax year twenty-one, which is the most current data available. And we looked at how many filers we have, how those returns come back. We built a model to estimate, okay, what's this going to do? And if you see where this shows the percent of total returns overall on the right, you can see that going above four hundred thousand for single filers and above four hundred and eighty thousand for joint filers, that's going to affect a combination of about one point eight percent of returns. So that means that that other ninety-eight percent and change are either going to pay the same rate or if you are a joint filer and because that lower tax tier is expanding, you're actually going to pay less rate than you did last year. But all told, in the right hand, upper right hand, this is where our twenty-four fiscal impact comes in, six point one million annualized at the end of three years. When all of that is recouped, it will be close to fourteen point eight million. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Please, quick question for you, Mr. Trumbauer. So is this rate that you've set, the four hundred and the four eighty, is this something that is going to be adjusted every year? Or is this, where did you land at that number? I guess my question is, if you leave it at that number and over time, you just keep that as the threshold, at some point, as people's incomes go up and over time, there'll be a lot more people caught in that. So that's what I'm trying to understand is what's the rationale for how you got there?
So this, just like you can set the tax, the income tax rate comprehensively every year, this could be changed every year. I can tell you, this particular tier was determined because as the county exec described, he went through his budget process, he saw what needed to be funded and then worked with the budget team to put the puzzle together, how are we going to do it? He was very interested in keeping the rates as low for as many people as possible. So this was kind of a natural place we settled and I believe in some ways matches either the state or federal breakpoints as well. I've heard, you know, on the federal side, people talk about four hundred thousand. And then we adopted the joint filing percentages that are similar to how the state applies them. So that four hundred and eighty is a, and a multiplier of that four hundred for singles and we copied what the state does.
Thank you.
All right, I'm apologizing in advance, this is a noisy slide, but it tells a story and I want to tell that story. So on the top right, you see this little chart and this breaks down what I was saying on the previous slide. But about forty-six point five percent of our filers are actually going to pay a lesser amount than they did last year. About fifty-one point six are going to pay the same and we estimate that one point eight percent are going to pay that upper amount. But again, only for that income above that threshold, not on their entire earnings, okay? And this is where we get the fourteen point eight annualized. So here's a couple of examples. Just for the sake of argument, let's say we've got a teacher in Anarundel County and the teacher makes sixty thousand a year. How is this, these income tax rates going to affect them? Well, the green boxes, that's showing you savings from the progressive rate. And what you see is last year when we set that up in tax year twenty-three, they would save fifty-five dollars on their taxes compared to the year before. This year, if you look under twenty-four in that single filer teacher, their tax rates staying the same, no change, okay? They're paying the same amount. I've also circled in blue their effective tax rate, which is what they're actually paying based on their total taxes they're paying, right? So they're paying two point eight percent on most of their income, but they're paying two point seven on that first fifty thousand. So you average all that out, it's two point seven, okay? So let's look over at the joint income side. Let's say the teacher and their spouse are, are joint filers and together they make about a hundred and fifty a year. How's this going to affect? So again, you look under twenty-three, saving that same amount, fifty-five dollars because we set out, up that lower rate for the fifty thousand of taxable income. This year, actually, they're going to get another slight reduction. They're going to pay twenty-eight dollars less than they did last year because that joint filer lower rate bracket is up to seventy-five thousand instead of fifty, okay? So you all following me with me? I know what you're thinking and Mr. Volkey, you're thinking it. Let's see what it looks like for higher-income people. Have I got a slide for you?
That's not what I'm thinking.
So let's do this, kind of some, some other income. Let's say we've got a senior engineer that's doing pretty well. They're making a hundred and fifty thousand a year in taxable income. No change to them in twenty-four. Let's say joint income. Let's say they're married to a lawyer and they're doing really well. And so they're four hundred and fifty a year. You're doing pretty good if you're making four hundred and fifty a year, right? You're getting a twenty-eight-dollar tax break this year in this structure, okay? Well, Chris, how's this going to work? Someone's paying more money? Yes, someone is paying money. If you're doing even better than that, let's say you're a corporate executive and you're pulling a hundred, six hundred thousand a year, you are going to be paying more taxes. Last year, you did get a fifty-five-dollar break, you're welcome. This year, you will be paying about seven hundred and eighty dollars more if you're, if you have six hundred thousand of taxable income. So that is shown in red. Now, interestingly, your effective tax rate is nine, two point nine-three percent, okay? That is much lower than many of our surrounding counties, including Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, Prince George's County. They're paying three point two percent. Well, how much are they paying? I've got a column right here that shows you, they're actually paying a hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars more than someone in Anarundel making that same income because they're paying full freight of two, three point two percent, okay? And over on the joint side, if you have a, a joint filers that are making a million dollars a year, okay? Then they'll be paying two thousand dollars more this year compared to last year, but they're still paying nineteen hundred fifty-five dollars less than if they made that income in Howard County, Baltimore County or our other neighboring jurisdictions, okay?
I have a question.
Yep, please.
Okay, quick question, Mr. Trumbauer. Slide twenty-five, page twenty-five on there, you have the teacher at sixty grand.
Sure.
And you have them paying a tax rate of two point seven and then two point eight-one and you show what that looks like. But on slide twenty-three, you talk about the new filer brackets are going to be two point seven for the first seventy-five of income.
Yes.
How does that jive up? Wouldn't the entirety of the teacher's sixty grand be taxed only at two seven?
Because the teacher's a single filer. So that fifty thousand bracket stays the same for single filers.
Got you.
For joint, we applied the multiplier and that's how we got to seventy-five. So if you look on the right-hand side, the joint income of a hundred and fifty, that's where you see that twenty-eight dollar. And if you want to really get in the weeds, look at the difference. You see that two thousand twenty-five number? That is a larger number than over in twenty-three because more of their income was applied to that lower rate.
Tracking, thank you.
Awesome. I told you this slide would be great. All right, so how do we apply, how do we compare to our neighbors? Well, it's complicated because no one else is really doing this yet. So that's why our graph looks a little weird. But if you look at our gold section of this, that's Anarundel, and going up to two point eight-one percent, that's where ninety-eight percent and change of our filers are going to be paying. We'd still be the fifth lowest. If you take that all the way out to three point two percent, then we match some of our other counties. But remember, because of our other lower tiers that have that lesser rate, they're actually paying a lower graduated rate than our neighbors. So it's hard to compare apples to apples in this. I think DLS is going to have to come up with a new category so we can do this. All right, this is just to show you, income tax revenue, very similar to property tax in that it kind of continues to roll upward. There was a little dip, as you can see, back during the Great Recession and then it has gone up more recently. But there's a little bit more noise in income tax than property tax. And then the red line shows you that constant dollar in today's dollars. So it, it shows you how it's going. Looks maybe a little bit like the Loch Ness monster there, okay? All right, real estate taxes. This is where we really took a hit this year. You probably remember at the county exec's budget town hall, I got up and told you how smart we were and we budgeted below what the peak was. So we were right, but we weren't right as much as we thought because it went below that level, which I'll show you in a graph in a moment. So we took a pretty good hit in twenty-three and we are continuing to forecast that down in fiscal twenty-four. Now, we don't exactly know what's going to happen in fiscal twenty-four because it hasn't started yet. Doesn't start till July first. Is it possible the real estate market recovers? Yes, it's possible. Is it possible it gets worse? Absolutely. Is it possible it stays the same? Yes. So what we're doing is we're budgeting conservatively because we would much rather be wrong on the conservative side. And if the real estate market recovers and we get more R and T revenue, then that's good for the county. It means that we've got fund balance. But we don't want to be on the other side of that where we miss and then we have deployed that funding and then need to figure out a way to take it back. So this is the chart that you're probably used to seeing now. On the left is that big run-up and decline of the housing bubble of twenty years ago. And then you see again, a, a sharp increase and then decline of the pandemic real estate boom, which no one really expected. And that red dotted line is where we budgeted for because we were looking at the incremental growth over time without taking those peaks into account. So as you can see, we are now below that. We do believe that it will eventually recover back into that kind of linear growth that we're used to, but it may take a couple of years to get there. Here's just showing the transactions and average price. So you can see that the price is holding solid and it did that for a couple of years after the housing bubble as well. But the number of units sold has really plummeted and we don't know if that is the low point or if it will keep going down. This is to show you why this is happening?
Can you go back to that last slide real quick?
Yep.
And that red line is the average price of the home?
That is the average sale price.
Wow, so we're, we're over five hundred thousand, average. Okay.
Right, but remember that's different from the overall assessment values because this is just who's selling houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we believe that there's still a lot of pent-up demand, but no one's really putting their mouths, houses on the market or buying because of those high interest rates. Unless you're buying with cash, you're paying a big premium. Because of this next slide, you know, you're paying mortgage interest rates around six and a half percent right now.
Right.
All right, so transfer tax, and this is something new. The county exec mentioned in his remarks. For real estate transactions that are greater than one million dollars, those will be now taxed at one point five percent instead of one percent. This revenue will go into a special dedicated fund that we created last year, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we're projecting in twenty-four that that will be about seven and a half million. We originally contemplated this would be closer to nine and a half or ten million, but because of the charts I showed you in the preceding slides, that forecast is down. But you will also see in this budget that we are supplementing the Housing Trust Fund with two million dollars of general fund to keep it up at that general level of around nine and a half or ten million. So that money is being deployed mostly in ACDS budget, but there's also about seven hundred thousand in the partnership budget. But that's all a special dedicated fund, it's outside of the general fund and I'm sure ACDS and the partnership will tell you all about it when they come before you in the coming days. All right, a couple other sections of revenue I'm going to run through with you guys. In fiscal twenty-three, highway user revenue revised down by the state a tad. But we are seeing in general more highway user revenue funds coming in because the legislature passed a bill, I believe it was last year. It's nowhere near where it was back in the days before the Great Recession, but it is creeping upward, which is helpful. And then we are seeing the recovery of table game and admission and amusement tax. They are pretty much at pre-pandemic levels at this point. So for twenty-four, that's the extra highway user revenue I mentioned starting to come in. We are thinking that table games will level off a little bit, but admission and amusement tax is going to keep on coming in as long as Hollywood keeps producing decent movies. That's giving us a total of about twenty-six million dollars for twenty, fiscal twenty-four. And you can see that's a little over three percent increase. All right, so this is. All right, so this is state shared revenue over time. You can see back in the days of the early 2000s, we were getting a lot more. Again, that's attributable to highway user revenues. And then that one spike is when they gave the VLT dollars, the Video Lottery Terminal Dollars through state shared instead of directly, so that's an artificial spike. But you can see that things dipped down in '20, and they've now pretty much come back up to the normal trend. Local sales tax, okay, this is a fun one. So people are going out again and staying in motels and hotels. That's good for the county. So we revised up that a little bit in '23, and parking revenue is largely flat, a little bit less than our original estimates. You might remember that this is largely from the parking lots in and around BWI Airport. So looking ahead for fiscal '24, we're taking a little bit more out of the telephone tax that goes down every year because people aren't using landlines. Most of the other categories are flat, but we are increasing the hotel tax estimate, and that is in part because we are increasing the hotel tax from 7% to 8%. We estimate that will generate about $1.8 million. That will go into the general fund this year, but as the County Exec mentioned, he is putting some additional funding into the Resilience Authority, and that is largely because of this revenue source. There is codified funds that go from the hotel tax receipts to the Arts Council and to the Visitors Bureau. Those are specific amounts. So as we raise from 7 to 8%, those codified amounts will also increase. So you can see Arts Council revenue or Arts Council funding will go up by 67.5,000, and then the Visitors Bureau revenue will go up by 382.5,000. Just for context, and the County Executive mentioned this in his speech, Baltimore City and Baltimore County are both a higher rate of 9.5%. Some of our other counties are where we are now at 7%, but again, we're planning to go up to 8. Okay, here's just a look over time at that local sales tax. That did have a big pandemic hit. We're not quite up to where we were before, but you can see, once we project '24, we're getting pretty close to where that was, and for, you know, 10 years or so, it was pretty flat around that 32 to 33 million dollar total receipts. Licensing and permits, also, we're projecting flat year over year, pretty much, we're, we had a big year in '22, which I think was kind of pent-up demand from a few years of pandemic. That's now evened out. We're not quite where we were on licenses, permits, revenue, pre-pandemic, but we're pretty close. Investment income, this is a good story. The thing that happens when interest rates goes up is your investments get more interest, so that is good. So if you look, we revised up our '23 by pretty much, but we do think interest rates will come down in the future, so our '24 numbers are going down a bit, and that is as expected.
Chairman Smith? Do you mind if I just interrupt for a question? Thank you very much. I think I ask this every year, but where do we get investment income from in the county?
I might ask Huja to come up and give us a little bit more detail on that, but we hold cash in some things, and that, instead of having it sit there and not do anything, we have that in interest-bearing accounts. We also get income when people have a bill and they pay it in certain installments. Then maybe it's two installments, and there's a certain percentage of a small interest payment, you know, that gets tacked on to that. But all that does accumulate, you can see, it's not a ton. It's 1.6 million, but, you know, as we say in the Budget Office, that ain't nothing, so...
I wish my checking account did that.
Is there anything, Huja, you wanna add? There we go. Guest appearance, where's his walk-up music?
Huja Hasin, for the record. So basically, we, we have general fund money to invest, for example, proper tax usually due in September, and then second installments in December. So pretty much 50% of our revenue came by December, and then our expenditure is basically divided by 12, like every month occurs like evenly. So we will invest those general fund money on various secure treasuries, I think CDs, money market accounts, and then that's, right now, money market accounts making about 1.5% average. Last year, 0.1%. That's why last year's investment income is like 600,000-ish. Now, as of today, is like 3.8. And also, it's true that sometimes in June, our revenue is negative because we basically almost spend everything, and then at the time, those interest income has to give back. So if you look at the books today, I think we have 4.8 million dollar interest income booked. But why I only use 3.8 is based on the estimate, 1.1 point something million of that will given back to other funds. Like we have, we sometimes borrow money from other fund balance, like utility fund, we have 240 million dollar on the utility, that's a response. Those cash, we borrow them from them, and then we have to pay the interest to them. So that's how it works.
Thank you very much.
He does know his numbers, doesn't he? Okay, other revenue, so there is another, another new source this year. Again, the County Executive mentioned it this morning, but we are going to start charging a surcharge on ride share. So this is Uber, Lyft, and those companies. We're gonna start on January 1, so that folks have a chance to get geared up for that. But just to clarify, this is in rides that originate in Anarundel County. So I think you heard that Howard County and the City of Annapolis have this in place already. So for instance, if I was in Severna Park and I wanted to do a fun night out in downtown Annapolis, I might get an Uber, and I'm gonna pay 25 cents on that Uber down to the city dock in Annapolis. But if I come back at the end of the night, that 25 cents on that is gonna go to the City of Annapolis. Similarly, if we get someone that comes in from another jurisdiction into the airport, we will not get the 25 cents on that because it originated out of the county, but when they go back home, we will get that 25 cents. So this is a new revenue source. We don't, we don't really have a precise estimate. We can look at what Howard County and City of Annapolis and other jurisdictions have, have brought in, but there's no way to know exactly what Anarundel did. So we budgeted a pretty round number, 500,000 for basically six months of this year. We think that's as good of an estimate as any, but should this go into effect by next fiscal year, we'll have real data in Anarundel, and we can put forth a full-year solid fiscal projection together for that. But as you can see at the bottom of this slide, there are a number of other Maryland jurisdictions that have this in place already. Okay, and then inter-fund reimbursement, this is kind of the island of misfit toys. This is just where we balance out everything. Some of our enterprise funds and other special, special revenue funds, they have splits and they borrow money and get money, and so this is where we even it all out. So that totals this year 78.3 million dollars. And then I put this slide in here for you guys because I knew you would ask about it. New revenue, right? So this is new stuff that we weren't doing last year. We've got that progressive income tax tier, we've got the above-the-cap property tax, the hotel and the ride share. This is all in the general fund. That's about 34.4 million of new revenue stream that's coming in. And then over on the dedicated fund side, we've got that 7.5 million coming in from the Affordable Housing Trust, bless you. All right, let's talk about the rainy day fund. So this council has been a great partner with the administration, raising our reserves over the last couple of years. We first raised it to 6%, then 7, and now we have the good fortune to be able to raise that to 8%. This is a smart thing to do, especially because many macro economists are projecting a recession the next 12 months, so we have that one-time funding available. Putting it in the reserve fund makes good fiscal sense, and it will be there in the event that we need it. Also, when we look around, we're getting much closer to where most other jurisdictions have, that are AAA-rated, have in total amount of reserves. So I think this 8% will pretty much get us there. It's incremental, but this will give us, I believe, more than 150 million in reserves, which is appropriate for a budget of our size. This is just a summary slide. It's really small. I'm sure you'll have a hard time looking at it again, but for your reference, this just shows you all the tax rate and fee changes that are proposed, and this is detailed out for, you know, City of Annapolis and Highland Beach because they have a tax differential, and then the income tax section got a little bit more complex because of our tiered rates, but able to fit it all in one slide, and you can bookmark this as a reference. Okay, expenditure detail. So here's where the money is going. Board of Ed is about 49% if we consider it fully loaded. What do I mean by that? We give the Board of Ed a giant check, but then we also pay for school health, school safety, debt service, and now retiree healthcare for the board. So we add all those together, and that's really our total support of Board of Education. So that's where we're at, the 49% number. And then the other big one is public safety at 20, and then you can see the various other core groups and their slices of the pie are in this chart. Here's the numbers behind that pie chart. You can really see that the Board of Ed is top dog there. It's over $1 billion fully loaded to the board in fiscal '24. Here are all the new positions, net new positions that are going to departments in the fiscal '24 budget. The big ones that are worth noting, the Police and Fire Department, each getting 19 new positions. Largely, those are sworn police officers in the Police Department and firefighter positions in the Fire Department. Also, there's some new positions coming in under the Chief Administrative Officer. You heard the County Exec mention, the Hispanic, Latino, and multicultural Office of Support and the new Equity and Human Rights Office. So those are getting some additions. You all are getting five new positions in the legislative branch, and then you'll see another spattering. A couple I'll just mention, Rack and Parks is getting some new positions. As you know, we've added some parks, and their visitation has continued to be high ever since the pandemic, so they're getting some maintenance workers and a new park ranger. And then in Public Works, we did some internal study and work group trying to expedite our capital projects, so they're getting some new project managers over there.
So I got a question. I see police, fire, state's attorneys, detention facility, why not Sheriff's Department?
No new positions, new pins in Sheriff's Department. I believe there's some reclasses to allow some of their vacancies to be converted into what Sheriff Esker wanted in the budget, but there's no new positions in the Sheriff Department this year.
Was there, I mean, because, because other departments have similar PIN exchanges in which they can do, but no net increase from, was this recommendation from the, from the administration or did the Sheriff Department ask for any additional positions?
I mean, the, the budget process is, you know, is a deliberative process, and, you know, the sheriff came in and presented to the County Executive. One of the things we were able to do for the sheriff was increase the number of sheriff vehicles. They have a number of vacancies, which I don't know off the top of my head, but Stephen probably does, or Kyle. So we were able to use the funding that we had available to invest in new sheriff vehicles. So that's 12 new vehicles. That will, I think, help the sheriff with recruitment, but also make sure that 12 of those posts have vehicles available, but there's no new positions out of the Sheriff Department this year.
Okay. Yep, please.
Could you just go into a little bit of detail on the asterisk at the bottom, the four existing positions that will be abolished upon vacancy?
Yes, okay, so this is, this is something that we put in to the Personnel Pay Bill because the way, sometimes the way reclasses are done, you have to create a new position, but you can't eliminate the old one because there's an incumbent in there, and, and there would be a period of time where that person's job got eliminated and they weren't onboarded yet. So we didn't wanna just create these phantom pins so it would look like they're double-counted. So what we did is we put narrative language in the pay bill that will eliminate those phantom pins once the new position is filled with the previous incumbent. So it's just kind of a technical maneuver to make sure, and this, we largely did this because we thought you all would say, what are these extra pins? And we wanted you to know, these aren't new pins, they're just a cumbersome way to get the reclass done.
Understood, thank you.
Great, great question. But yeah, you saw my fine print there, very good. All right, speaking of pay packages, so all 11 bargaining units ratified their agreements thanks to Ann Budowski and her team. As busy as the budget season is for us, negotiation season is as busy or more for her and her team, but generally, and every agreement has its own unique little things, but in general, most will see a 5% on average COLA and then a merit step for county employees, and that is about the same as the total 8% package that schools got as well. So there's pretty, well, pretty good equity across the board. Non-rep employees are getting the same on average, and then we always include that commensurate COLA for our contractual workers as well. So all told, the incremental cost of the pay package this year is 25.2 million. That is a much larger number than usual, but this is a much larger cost of living than usual, but we're in time of high inflation. This is just to sum up the debt service. You can see that Board of Ed is the heavy hitter there, about 78.5 million dollars for Board of Ed. That's more even than the general county. Here's a history over time of debt service. You can see that there's been a pretty good ramp up of Board of Ed projects over the last decade and more, and the general county and community college have risen a little bit less dramatically, but have gone up over time as well. So this is a map from Department of Legislative Services at the state. It's from fiscal 2018, which is the most current available, but it just shows you the percent of assessable base and then shows all the Maryland counties. And what's interesting about this is we're in that kind of beige color, and all of our central Maryland peers, Baltimore City, County, Howard, Montgomery, and Prince George's are all in, above 3%. We're still in that 1% to 2%, so we think we're doing pretty good in that assessable base comparison. And this is to show you over time where our debt service to operating revenue has gone. So I think this tells a good story that the ratio is declining from back in fiscal 14 through 19. It was getting up, and this is, incidentally, when I was on the council, but it was getting up towards that 9%. It's still well within our threshold, but we've been able to bring it down. You can see in '24, we're looking at 8.1%. So that's, I think, a good story that goes to our fiscal management. Now, I wanted to talk about this acronym, OPEB. What's OPEB? OPEB is essentially retiree healthcare. It's, for whatever reason, it's technically called Other Post-Employment Benefits. The county's OPEB trust was set up back in 2014, circa 2014, and for whatever reason at that time, it included the county, the college, and the library, but not Board of Ed. So this year, every year, we do valuations with our actuary to look at our pension and OPEB accounts. This year, we had a new vendor doing our OPEB work. There were also some changes in the way Medicare works, and we, we found that we were actually able to realize some savings in our OPEB valuation, so we took that opportunity to then invest in the Board of Ed side. So there had never been any money put aside for the OPEB trust from 2014 till now on Board of Ed OPEB trust. And if you've ever been to one of our Budget Town Halls, you may have heard Kurt Svenson mention this. Well, this year, we are actually starting up, we're putting in the funding to start up the Board of Ed OPEB trust. So this is placeholder funding. We will need to do the work and have subsequent legislation that actually does all the particulars, but this is where we're gonna show it in the budget. So our estimate is about 19.2 million is, is what we would need to start this up for a full year. So we're very proud of this because every year that went by, when there was not funding for Board of Ed OPEB, that kind of makes our hole a little deeper to eventually get there. So this will help secure the retiree healthcare for our teachers and educators for the future many years ahead, so we're very pleased about that. Okay, let's talk about Board of Ed funding. So again, we give them one check direct account that goes into those 14 funding bins that I think you all are familiar with, but then we have debt service, OPEB, Pago, school health, school safety. You add all of that together, and our total amount of Board of Ed support is over $1 billion this year. That's 49% of the overall county operating budget. So this is looking at all funding sources, and you can see we're bringing in federal dollars, food services, Board of Ed revenue. Some of this is restricted versus unrestricted. So you can see, if we take all of that together, their total is 1.65 billion, and that's a year-over-year increase of 109,19 million. But then if you just look at unrestricted funds, which is what we typically think of when we're funding Board of Ed, this is where they can deploy it in those, in those categories they come and talk to us about. We're looking at about 109 million year-over-year increase, and this is gonna show you that the county is funding 45 million more than last year. The state actually increased its amount of funding, which is fantastic, and then they're also realizing their own internal revenue sources, which is largely coming from their investment. coming from their investment income. So you asked a great question about our investment income. Hoosier came and gave you way more than you wanted about where ours is coming from. That same phenomena is happening over at the Board of Ed, too. So we're able to use that and work further down their request list, which is great. All right, so just some highlights of the Board of Ed funding. As the county exec said, we're fully funding their compensation requests. We're meeting all of the blueprint mandates. Their virtual academy, which previously was being funded with federal dollars, their version of ARP funding, we're bringing that over to the county side, which means we're funding it so it'll be indefinite going forward. We're adding forty-five new pre-K, fourteen new English language, and fifteen new social emotional learning positions. The first year of staffing for Old Mill High School, which I believe is thirteen positions. And we're funding twenty-three new positions for their alternative transportation program. So all told, this is about eighty percent of the board's request, which we're very proud of and we think is extraordinary. And if I read Mr. Mosher's press release earlier today, it looks like they're very pleased with as well. But that's about a seven point two percent increase year-over-year. And I will mention one other thing to you. We worked collaboratively with the superintendent's team this year to do something relatively unique, which was in recognition of their high number of vacancies that they're experiencing, we were able to do what we would consider is acknowledge kind of a turnover adjustment to them. And what that means is that we took kind of back three million dollars of funding, and we use that to work further down the list. Because of the amount of vacancies they have, they can fund the full compensation requests and all the positions that we're budgeting them for, and they will, because of those amount of vacancies, they won't need the full amount. So we're taking back a little bit of that in order to work further down that list and fund these classroom positions. So this was, I think, a great collaborative approach that the superintendent's team is on board with, budget team is on board with, and probably won't happen every year. But because of the unique situation with their number of vacancies, and we're trying to get those filled, I think that's a smart thing to do going forward this year. All right, so community college. You can see the same chart here. So this is last year twenty-three, or current year twenty-three versus upcoming twenty-four. So they got about three million dollars extra funding in state, which is fantastic. We're contributing a million dollars of incremental increased funding, and then they have other sources coming in. So with the budget that's introduced to you all today, that's an eight million, eight point one million dollar year-over-year increase to the community college with a county contribution of one million dollars. This is just to show you over time, the community college funding, we always joke about the three-legged stool. So going back to twenty-fifteen, you can see that the college itself made up about forty-one percent of that stool. The county, which is blue, was closer to thirty-three percent, which is right on that third. But the state was, was down lower. The state has been increasing its contribution recently, which is great. The county has remained for some time as the, the longest leg of the three-legged stool. But you can see how these have changed over time. And this year, as it's proposed, the college would be contributing twenty-nine percent, thirty-three percent from the state, and thirty-seven point eight percent from the county. All right, and then final component unit is the library. So again, year-over-year, we're looking at a two point seven million dollar increase of county general funding, and just a tiny bit more from the state. But this is offset a little bit by about point seven million by a reduction in fines and fees and library revenue because they aren't charging fines and fees anymore. So that's why their overall increase is two point two million, but we are funding them two point seven million dollars more. All right, so operating summary, we got a balanced budget, y'all. It is one point nine billion of recurring. We're recognizing three million of one-time revenue from the General Assembly. This is actually what I joke as two-time funding because this is the police aid that they gave us last year. The General Assembly did it again this year, but we're still treating it as one-time. And then we've got our fund balance utilization there. So you see at the very bottom, that balance is zero. That means that recurring expenses are all paid for, I mean recurring, yes, recurring expenses are all paid for with recurring revenue. All right, so just a little bit more detail on the one-time revenue and fund balance. There's that one forty-nine point eight number we talked about, what seems like forever ago at the beginning of this presentation. And this is how it gets expended. That's one hundred and twelve million to the capital budget in terms of pay-as-you-go. That's essentially cash we're plugging into the capital. We are increasing the transfer to our garage vehicle fund. That rainy day fund's going up twenty-four point six. The Housing Trust Fund has point six of one-time, and then one point four of recurring. And then the other operating budget one-time expenses that are through our departmental budgets on things like heavy equipment and other one-time uses, that's eleven seven. So that utilizes our one forty-nine point eight of fund balance. This is just to show you in graphic form that the county for many years ran a structural deficit. Back in twenty-seventeen, they closed it. Then the pandemic hit. We opened up another one, but we closed it very quickly. And last year, the budget that you all approved actually had a point one million dollar surplus when it was all said and done. So what we're submitting to you as it stands is a zero point zero surplus. This is an exactly balanced budget. All right, capital budget. Hey, look at that. We got a new triple A bond rating. That's pretty groovy. So we found out from our consultants at the Public Research Group that we are one of fifty-two out of three thousand one hundred forty-three counties in the nation that have a triple triple A. So that's a lot of As, and we're very pleased of that. We're in the top one point six five percent. Thank you to our friends at Fitch for recognizing the county's fiscal management. Debt affordability model. So this is a great slide. This shows you our four affordability ratio and guideline thresholds. That's debt service as a percent of revenue, as a percent of full value, a percent of personal income, and then that debt per capita number. I've boxed in gold what those guidelines are. And if you look across from twenty-four all the way out till twenty-nine, you will see that we are well within those guidelines looking ahead in that six-year CIP, which is, I think, fantastic news. The other thing that, that you'll see when you dig into our capital budget, we work usually every year to try and address the lumpiness, which is different years having more funding than others. This year, I'll just be right up front with you guys. We have a very front-loaded CIP. Why is that? Couple reasons. Number one, we have a big slug of state funding that's coming in, especially on the education side. We've got an increased amount of IAC funding, which is Interagency Committee for School Construction, and we've got built-to-learn funding going into projects. So that is an elevated level of school construction funding. We've also done a really great job, and I'll give a shout out to Hannah Dyer in the CAO's office for attracting federal earmarks and other state investments from the governor's capital budget and the General Assembly and our delegation. But then finally, we are still deploying those PPI fund dollars from the public, for the permanent public improvement fund. So all of that means that for this year and the next couple, we're kind of at an elevated level. And then it kind of goes back to lower amounts in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. So what that means is when we move off a high investment year, like twenty-four will be, if we fast forward a year and we look at where we'll be in twenty-five, that authority will move off to scales, and we'll have more authority to bring in and start filling in additional new projects in the later end of the CIP next year. So that's kind of the story of the capital budget. We've only got about nineteen new projects in the budget, in the general fund, capital budget this year. This is again to show you how that breaks out over time. And the number that circled on the bottom right just shows you when all is said and done, we're showing that this is about twelve point six million dollars under our total affordability limit. So we're in good shape. Council has a little bit of room to maneuver, should you so choose.
Quick question. And I don't know if you have this data now, but certainly if someone could, could look into it. The capital programs that we have being completed, is there any inventory or database that says in twenty-ten, we had seventy projects under construction, or at least were funded with the capital program in twenty-ten? Sixty-nine projects in twenty-eleven that were being funded by a capital program. You get what I'm going here?
Yeah, I think, I think we can, we can do a query and get that data together as best as we can. It's important, it's important to know that today's, like this modern CIP is a lot different than it was, say, ten years ago, just because of the number of complexities of the different funding sources coming in that are new. But we can, you know, we can probably pull those numbers. I'll work with you and probably Naomi or DPW to get whatever you need.
Yeah, just, just number of projects that are being funded from each capital year with capital within the CIP program.
Yeah, and I will also take the occasion to follow up a little bit on some of the questions that you asked when the Planning Advisory Board were before you a little bit ago. So we are seeing cost increases in our capital projects for sure. Some of that is just straight inflation. Cost estimates are going up based on wages and based on supply chain issues that we saw, right? There probably is a component attached to prevailing wage, but remember, that's only for new projects.
Right.
So those are only, there's a handful of new projects that that applies to.
Correct.
But largely, it's probably more coming from inflation and supply chain issues. And then the other thing is that on some projects, there's scope change, and things are being, you know, changed from when the project was first conceived to when it's going to construction. So there's a number of different variables, and you have to look at all of those to get a true understanding.
Correct, totally understand.
So it does kind of stink that things cost more. But in many cases, you know, there's, there's varying reasons for that. And so you have to look at, at the entirety of that.
Totally agree.
Awesome. Okay. So here's the, just the layout of our PPI funding. And you can see every project that this is invested in. Many of these are prior approved. That's already been done in previous years. But what this is showing is that when you add it all together, once you get through fiscal twenty-five, we will have fully deployed that twenty-five, two hundred fifty thousand, sorry, two hundred fifty million dollar capital infusion of PPI funds. And remember, that was for school construction, transportation projects, and public safety. Okay, so where's the funding going? You can see there's a number of heavy hitters here. Board of Ed is about a third of the capital project. Roads and Bridges is twenty-one percent. Rackham Parks is twelve percent, and General County is fifteen percent. Public Safety is ten percent. And again, this is general funds. Here it is by class. These are the numbers behind the pie charts. Just, you can see Rackham Parks, another big year, ninety million dollars. I'm sure when Jessica Layes and Erica Matthews come before you, you will have lots of questions on their many projects. And you can see the Board of Ed is a pretty extraordinary amount, one hundred and ninety-two million dollars into their FY twenty-four budget totals. All right, so capital budget is long and complex. I'm not going to give you an eight-point font slide to go through everything, but I did want to just say a couple of things. The cool thing is, for those of you that have been around and you're used to the binder, it's a little skinnier this year. It's because every project is on one page. Auditor staff, am I right? Is this helpful? So these things were getting really heavy, and it's a lot easier to search in Control F on your PDF now, and it's a lot easier to fit in your laptop bag. But we've got it down to one page, and I wanted to thank Naomi. This was two years in the making figuring out how to do this the best way and working with our partners at DPW. But all the same information is there. It might be a little smaller, and it's oriented different, but I think it's worth it for one page. But a couple of things on the Board of Ed funding, and Mr. Stansky and his team will be here in the coming days and show you that favorite red, white, and blue chart. But we did move up the Old Mill High School funding, moved that up one year compared to last year's program. This is also the final year of funding for the new West County Elementary School. But by and large, every other specific capital project is largely on track with what you passed last year. There's only nineteen new projects, capital projects in the general fund. I did mention that there's that one hundred and twelve million of Pago. And as you might have seen in one of the previous slides, we're keeping that new debt authority constant at one hundred and sixty million. Remember, we reduced that last year from one hundred and seventy. So we're keeping that at one sixty for the six-year CIP. And as I showed in the last slide, the total affordability is twelve million dollars under the limit for the CIP. Real quick on enterprise funds. You guys probably know, these are dedicated. So the revenue streams go into the fund, the expenses are from the fund. So they're kind of self-supporting. No major changes. Really, these pie graphs just show you where the revenues and expenditures come from and go. We will note that the utility funds are generally increasing their fees in accordance with the program we did last year. DPW will walk through all of those, and we'll show you the rate models at the appropriate time. And then that's it for me. All the budget documents are available to you and any members of the public at aacounty.org/budget. You can also get the county executive's cool materials, like their little four-pager, an abbreviated version of this presentation, and lots of other cool stuff. And that's it. I thank you on behalf of the budget team, and I am at your service and at disposal for the next forty-five days. Let me say, as a moment of personal privilege, as someone who has not only sat at this table, but also been up where you are, I know how important the process is, that the legislative branch gets a chance to, to look through every nickel of this budget. I look forward to working with you, the auditor team, to make it better. This is a great budget, but we know there's going to be changes. We know new information's going to come in, and you're probably going to find some mistakes. And we welcome that opportunity to make this budget better. You all have my cell phone. Call anytime. It's going to be a good process. So, thank you.
Well, I'm certainly appreciative of seeing, seeing any of the lights, appreciative of the amount of effort that went into this. I can't imagine doing this. When do you actually start the budget, like process for you?
Well, capital budget starts in September.
Yeah.
So pretty much right when we get the approved book done, Naomi and the DPW team jump back in. The earnest part of the operating budget starts on the department side early as they get their formulations together. We start working with them in, generally in December, and that's when we get our first initial preliminary revenue estimates.
Got it, got it. And last question. Have you, do you guys ever discuss multi-year budgets? Just random question.
Um, I know that some other jurisdictions do capital budget every other year. As long as I've been around, Anna Rundell has been very aggressive at doing it every year. I would say, things change a lot. And once a year, that's the way we're set up to do, and we'll keep doing it until someone tells us to do it.
Got it, got it. Just curious. All right, well, thank you all for, you and your team, for, yeah, round of applause, I guess. I don't know if that's warranted, but.
For these guys, yeah.
But I'm always a fan of your, your quirkiness and your rapid response to comments that happen all the time. So appreciate your efforts.
Great. Well, thank you. Good luck in, tonight at your council meeting and in the next forty-five days. Thank you.
All right. Log back in here. All right, the, we will now take a recess and come back together at seven PM for our regular Monday legislative meeting. See you all in a few hours.